Okay, so first up on our...
Recording in progress.
First up on our agenda, what do you want to proceed with?
The GIS.
The GIS mapping?
Yeah, we need GIS.
So we have it up there. That's okay with you.
Oh, that's fine. Okay, so I gave you these last pages this are. Basically a green sheet, this is what John and this staff uses to do utility locates with. This is what we have is our current mapping system. As far as the water and sewer and storm drain infrastructure. And then with the GIS. You know, the old data in this, with our old GIS system, we're still using the old data that's in there. And the accuracy of that, it's off by three feet or more. Today's GIS system, we're down to four inch accuracy. So that's going to be the big difference and. We're gathering locations of each utility and the components of those utilities. Then GIS and Vision, who were contracted with Jill Fisher. First out, what they're doing, they're taking the new information and they're also using distant parts of the old GIS system to build the new GIS system off of. That way they don't have to completely scratch the old system and start from, basically start from scratch again. So it's saving them, saving them time, saving us money. Then when we're out in the field doing the locates, you know, and locating, you know, each, each one of the utilities, we're also referencing old GIS information as far as the utility locates, we're using the map books. And then Don staff, they're going out and they're locating. Anything that we can pick up on like cul-de-sacs, any waters, any water lines. They have any bins in them, that's where Don staff is going out doing the locates. Then we can come back, come behind them and pick that up with their GIS and put those into the system.
So that's what's up now is what we've got going.
Right, that's, this is what we're up going.
That we've been working on.
And. See here, I don't know if I'm going to be able to share a lot of. But the little blue squares with the little black dots in them, that are meter pits. You have fire hydrants with the little circle and the two little arms sticking out. Let's see if I can load up a little bit. I can see it a lot better on my screen than what you can on the TV. Cave in the, the green circles, they have our manholes. Then if you see stagecoach right there, that's our, that's our water line. Then we also have the sewer line located on Stagecoach Drive.
Is the sewer line the green one?
Yeah, sewer is green. And then, um, let's see if I can open it for you. Like a 25, 22 stagecoach where you see the little black dot, that is actually the curb stop box before the meter pit. And the meter pit is directly behind that with the square and the M symbol inside of it. And really that's, you know, a lot of the nuts and bolts to the GIS system right now. And what we do have is the older data. On the scroll over here to Old Town. And this is some of the older data that we have in there, but it's just not accurate. We're with, well, we're off by three feet or so with the old data. But this is similar to what you're going to see. Once we have all the locate and everything is finished for the GIS system.
So I did run into a couple of our guys as they were doing some, they said they were doing GIS locates. So is it done electronically or do they have to get out and open up the pit to see where it is?
No, they're basically, um, they just have to get out of the truck. It's, it's little satellite box. It picks up the signal, they have an iPad. So what they do is when they go over to a meter pit, they open up the iPad and on the iPad there. Let me see if I can bring it up. There's a list of layers and you'll see the layers up on the screen. And they have to go to each one of those layers and input that information of what utility they're actually working on and what the, what is going to be labeled as.
So about how much of the town do you think we've got done as far as the water meters and things like that?
You know, right now I would say probably about eight. We haven't gotten a whole lot of locating done in the past month.
Can't imagine why not.
I know.
They've not been, yeah, they've not been doing that.
Then, you know, after we got all the utility information gathered, we're going to go back and install the May here and model of all the utility components. Then use the as-built plans to double check all the utility data. So what's on the, you know, a current construction plan? You know, we can use that as a guideline, but we want to use the as-built plan to see if any modifications were changed to that plan. Then if they were, we want to include those features back into the GIS system. That way we have a complete map of it.
What about our newer, our most recent subdivision was Sunfield and Forkstone? Is that data fairly accurate?
That data is, oh, we're just now getting that data in here. We didn't receive any of that data with that subdivision. We received the mapping in the construction plans and the as-built drawings. But no GIS mapping was provided. So we're having to pick that up in the field.
So the next subdivision we build, we will require GIS?
Yes, it will be required GIS. That way we can just take it off, directly off the as-builds and input that right into our GIS.
So is there some reason why we didn't have the, have that as a requirement? Did we just miss it or?
You know, I, you know, I can't speak, you know, what's happened in the past, but I don't.
Sure.
You know, I'm just thinking, you know, out loud here that, you know, the town was working on GIS. And I don't know how far along they were at the time.
Yeah, I don't think we were far along.
No, and it wasn't something that was acquired that I believe. So now we'll make sure it's a requirement. Because we don't want our guys out there doing all the work that could be done while everything's being placed.
Right, when the engineers are developing, developing the plans, they go through the approval process for the town. That, that will be part of the approval process and final inspection is to receive those plans.
So who would do that, the builder?
The, oh, the developer would. And, you know, the developer would pay his engineer to create those plans and give them to the town.
So how old is our old GIS?
You know, some of the data that I seen went back to 2010.
So we really should have had it in place probably for.
It would have been nice, but at the time, you know.
I know, I'm not.
You know, at the time, the information that you could get off the GIS, three feet accuracy was great. Back in the day, but now it's four inches.
We had that long company, do you remember that?
That's why I was.
They went out of business or something, they wouldn't come back and give us the information.
Okay.
Even after we spent money on it. So we ended up at ground zero, so.
Sure.
I mean, it's a, it's a full process, our goal is to try to get it done this year.
Well, just happy to make a progress.
Yeah, as long as the weather cooperates, we'll be able to move a lot faster. But I think it's pretty awesome, it's just going to be a huge tool for the town. When we have anybody come in to do anything, whether it's fiber or, you know, any utility.
Water, sewer, what Don's guys doing with locates, I mean, they can pull it up on the iPad, they can pull it up on their phones. And you're going to have instant access to it.
We're going to have access to other utilities. Gas, electric.
You know, we haven't went out and contacted them yet. I doubt that they're going to provide that information because a lot of utilities like to keep that information private.
And same reason why we probably won't share that on a, on a website. Because we don't want people to know where your infrastructure is.
But like when the guys were out here drilling holes and on the boring. And they kept hitting our line, they hit two of our lines though.
The service lines.
The laterals, yeah. Yeah, those will all be in the GIS system, right?
They're in the GIS system, but in order to locate them, they need, they need to be installed with a wire.
Tracer wire.
A tracer wire. Because if they're installed tracer wire, it's impossible to locate your polygon.
Hopefully we won't have too many more of those.
So will this be of any help, say like if somebody has a sewer backup on their personal property, residential property?
This won't get any information from, from there and right away get into the lots.
It'll, it'll locate the, like the sewer connection though?
Um, we can go back and locate the tap off the Don's videos.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. So, but each, but each individual sewer cap, no, it won't be on there. What we're doing as far as the sewer services, where the markings of the sewer service is on the curb and gutter. That's what we're picking up as far as where the sewer line was originally installed for the development. Because that is one requirement that you have the water and the sewer identified on the curb and gutter.
But in Old Town, that's not.
No, that's just the newer subdivision.
Old Town's probably going to be the harder.
It's going to be challenging.
So the guys that do this, that are going to be putting in the fiber optic, is there like a depth that we would recommend they go or not go below so they don't hit our stuff?
Yeah, I'd like to see them stay at about a minimum of 30 inches.
And that's without giving away how deep it really is, you just say no deeper than 30 inches?
Right, and mostly fiber companies will probably want us to be at the 30 inch depth. Because once you hit the four to five foot range, six foot range, then you're starting running to the utilities.
So anyway, we wanted to provide this information to you to show you where, where, how far we've come with it. And what the plan is is to try to have it done by the end of the year. So that will have a good system that we can use. And utilize it.
Thanks, John.
Any other questions before we move on?
No, because we're about to discuss our favorite project.
Okay, I will give this back to her, let her do her thing then. We can go back to the stormwater master plan. Since last week, Tate, Tate Associate, Brian, our county engineer. He's gave us, he's provided us some new, new cost updates for 2013 from our original 2014 studies cost. And for each one of the project locations, there is a, a project total there. For the Hillsborough Detention Pond, the Wildcat Crossing across Quinteen. We're looking at just a little, little over one point, I mean, 3.1 million. Just for that, for the construction and the engineering services.
Okay, so let's just look at project number one. Pheasant Hills Detention Pond is where exactly? I can't see it.
That is where you see the proposed drop structure, the little, I want to call it purple square. The Pheasant Hills Detention Pond is just to the northeast of there. And with this project, it would include a new ditch crossing. Then also we'll need to add capacity to that pond.
And that's in this 3.1 million dollar figure?
Yes, it sure is. Yeah, the ditch crossing is included, the head walls, the wing walls, the hydraulic drop structure into the pond. The outlet works, channel improvements along Quinteen. Then we, then we also need to raise the volume of the Pheasant Hills Detention Pond to increase our volume there. Then we're looking at the cost of five eight by five foot box, concrete box culverts. Wing walls and head walls along each, on both sides, on both sides of those box culverts. Rip ramp and we'll need some right-of-way acquisition for the project also.
So one of our problems with culverts, some of them have smashed metal.
They're smashed.
What are we going to?
Concrete, a concrete box.
So we're moving to concrete?
Right, and a lot of our, well, a lot of the culverts, they're dramatically undersized for what the stormwater master plan is recommending. Because it's just, these structures right here, just our notes from our last meeting. We have one existing culvert that's crossing Quinteen east to west. That culvert's a 42 inch and that's allowing flows up to 980 gallons per minute. And then we have another existing 30 inch culvert that runs north to south along Quinteen. And that's allowing flows up to 367 gallons a minute. When this project does get completed and built, the flows would increase to a little over 33,000 gallons a minute.
Now that's, that's where the next planned subdivision is coming in, in Pheasant Hills, right?
Correct, I've heard, I've heard about it, but we haven't seen anything, I haven't seen anything on paper.
If they get water, yeah.
And project one, the Pheasant Hill Detention Pond, that is currently designed for the 100 year event.
And it's still not big enough at the 100 year event, it needs to be bigger?
The 100 year event, you know, I can't, I can never tell you that the 100 year event's going to hold everything. But the cost to increase it to a 500 year event is cost prohibitive. I don't even guess, you'd probably want to, times your 3.1 million by 25% or more.
Because right now, what is it sized at?
Right now, we have an existing 42 inch culvert that runs east to west across Quinteen. And another 30 inch culvert from Bobcat that runs up to this 40, 42 inch culvert. And that's sized at a 30 inch.
Do we know what the volume currently is at Pheasant Hills Detention?
No, we don't. I think, we could estimate that, you know, it can't exceed 890 gallons, 890 of gallons per minute. Just because those two culverts bottlenecked those flows.
Because I know when the event happened about a month ago at Wildcat, that was full. I mean, John and I went out there, I mean, that was the only time I've ever seen it full. And so, I mean, if there was any more water coming down, it would have overtopped and then the homes on the other side of it, down further of course, but north of it would have been really severely impacted.
Yeah, it's overtopped Quinteen and worsted that notably all three storm events so far.
So if it fills Pheasant Hills again, which homes would be impacted exactly? Is that still Frank Farms going to Midwest or would it go?
Pheasant Hills, because right now, the Pheasant Hills Detention Pond doesn't have an outlet structure on it. It's more of a retention, I mean, a detention.
It's a detention, so it's not designed to drain?
Right.
But if it fills and overtops, where?
If it fills and overtops, then it will. By probably, the drainage pattern is going to affect Centennial Farms. Centennial Farms and Frank Farms.
So it will get Frank Farms and Centennial Farms?
Yes.
And the people that live.
In Centennial.
North of Inez. And slightly east of Quinteen, would that be included as well?
That, that could be, yeah. Without, without looking at a map like, you know.
But the water flow would go more northeast.
Right, you travel more, more the northeast.
Yeah, because it's all coming across the road east of that, of that subdivision. And then it's hitting the cornfields. And I don't know where it goes from there, but it's ending up, well, in Old Town.
Right back there on 21 and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then they.
Right behind the middle school.
And then it, and then a lot of it ended up on forest there.
Right.
It traveled a long way, I mean, but that came from the field, I think, all that lot of.
You had a combination of, of, a lot of that was the field because that retention pond, it never did overtop.
Okay.
In all three events.
But it was pretty full.
It was very full.
Should we consider some sort of overflow drainage the way that Lake Erlich has?
Um, we will need to construct that eventually, our, our master plan does have that in the forecast.
But that's not part of this 3.1 million.
No.
Are you talking about forest now, about down in the forest, about what happens when it pools there?
No, about if Pheasant Hills Detention Pond overflows. If that overflows, we, we don't want to flood out the people in Centennial and Frank Farms again.
Right, and as part of that, if we would turn that retention pond into a detention pond. We'd have, the master plan's calling for an open channel. Then we have another 11 by five foot concrete box culvert. Then, which is called for is another open channel through that farm field just to the west of Centennial Farms. Then we do have another crossing on. That would be 21 and a half. Eight by five foot box culvert crossing. And then eventually end up over at Lake Erlich, Erlich Pond. Then from there, we need to discharge it from there back down the hills.
Well, Lake Erlich barely handled the water, it got this time.
Right, the overflow was about two and a half to three feet.
Yeah, so if.
It was still remaining.
If Pheasant Hills overflows and you run it that way.
Right.
Are we trading one problem for another?
You're going to do on the storm drainage until, I mean, just because the simple fact is, we can't, I don't think we can afford to do everything at once.
Well, no.
Where, where the open channel is, as you're, maybe I'll just point to it. This open channel right here.
Right.
Is there like a detention, that it's grade there, is that, is that a detention area or a floodplain or something?
No, I, I think they just, what they, that was just part of the, of the town limits. Well, that was outside of the town limits, more than likely at the time when this was developed, this plan was developed.
So that's private land right there?
That is private land.
But the channels?
There is no channel in there currently.
Oh, it says open channel.
Yeah, it's, there's not even an open channel, the water.
It's just where the water flows.
The water would flow into the Hillsborough as soon as it overtopped, Pheasant Hills right now. It would, it would flow into Hillsborough, then more than likely Hillsborough would overtop. And then, then it would just naturally flow out to Inez.
I can't remember, but is that area farmed?
Yeah, it is. And I believe Lot Holdings owns that property, just to the west of Centennial Farms.
Yes.
Because wouldn't that be a good area to see if we could someday, you know, purchase and build a, build an detention area there?
Since we're talking about that area, let me bring up, we are having problems with Centennial Farms, with the drainage in there. We have a couple of issues. Number one is all the sediment that is currently coming off, off of that farm field is filling all of our storm drainage pipe going along Inez. And that drains to the east and everything from there drains through Centennial Farms, through Sunfields and into Sunfield's Detention Pond. So we, I met with Brian and he has gave us cost on a, looking at a sediment basin right now. Just for we can capture all the sediment and not have to go in and clean out that RCPs on the storm drainage pipe every single year. That's costing us $8,000 to $9,000 every cleaning, and we're having to clean that.
So sediment, so that's like a tank or someplace where it drops down?
What, what this would be, it'd be basically a natural hole, just a natural hole, natural hole. And we're looking at just the basin being approximately, approximately five foot to six foot lower than what the grade of the, what the drainage pipe is now. For that way the sediment can accumulate inside of that pond. And we can go in and maintain it and dig that sediment out before it goes down the drainage system.
How big?
You know, that's something that Brian's going to have to figure out during the engineering on, for the project.
Where do you put something like that?
Well, what we're looking at now, we're currently looking at and seeing how much right-of-way we have on Inez. And also Brian is looking at the, the overall stormwater plan and seeing what those drainage patterns produce and trying to get the volume to determine the size of that sediment basin. Once he has the size figured out, that'll give us a little bit better idea of placement and what land we might need to require.
That sure, I mean, the last two big rains, that sure is a mess over there.
Oh, that is.
It's making a huge mess, a lot of cleanup, a lot of work.
And, yeah.
Yeah.
And just that, just that project with, well, what they're estimating with construction and engineering, we're setting it to say 375,000.
For just that sediment?
Just that sediment basin.
375,000?
Yes.
Plus whatever property we need to acquire?
Correct.
That we would hope would be donated. So can you start writing with my words?
We don't have it.
Then we're on the subject of.
In all, oh, sorry, John. Yeah, so in all reality, we can't go to this last, the last work section. We have the American Rescue Act money to receive.
Arba money, yeah.
That's $2,52,000, $19,000. Anyway, this would be, it would be a good help to get this started.
To make memories.
But, you know, between, between John and our engineers, we have to prioritize which one, which one's the most affordable. I think this, you know, this master plan was done quite a while back. And I think it was intended to probably be a long-term approval plan. And it still needs to be. Because we, we can't fund everything today. We'll have, we'll have to plan to do this over decades. Because we don't make enough money to, to issue debt for it. We don't, we don't, we don't incur enough revenue off the fees that we charge. We have, we have storm drainage fees that's on our utility bill. There's just not enough revenue for these types of projects.
So if we went back out to that, set sales tax again and committed that to this, we could commit those, that money, that extra revenue on sales tax?
I'd be very careful committing taxes to one specific item, especially something that has been determined to be a self-sustaining business type of a fund. You can't use tax revenue in those types of, in those types of funds. So I would be very careful saying that. What we could do is, and we do have capital projects, sales tax funds, okay? We already have a half a percent sales tax that goes to capital projects. We can spend that money on projects like this. If we were to get additional sales tax, increase revenues due to increases in a tax rate. We could use that money for this, but I'd be very careful designating it for a storm created projects. Because we already have that as a business enterprise.
So if we would set it aside for capital improvement projects, then that makes more sense. Because we don't know what next year or the year after is going to bring, something else that becomes as important as this. You know, look how long, you know, it's taken us to be able to get Cherry Street. And we were just fortunate enough to get a grant for a good size to help do that.
So we could go back out to the voters and say, we're going for a half a percent sales tax increase.
For capital improvements.
For capital improvements, that is specifically what we. For capital improvements. That is specifically what we feel we need to do. And this is the capital improvements plan. And update it with what the board chooses for. Is it project one, two, or three? I assume we're doing one first?
I would recommend number one because if you give your project number, number two or number three, you're just going to be adding those additional flows.
Right.
Further down.
Further down into the floodplain preserve.
Is there grant money possibly? Because we're so good at finding grants. Are there grants for this types, these types of things or not?
Sure there is, but we'd have to look. I don't know of anything about it off the head.
What we're hoping for was that they would consider this an emergency, Weld County, and they haven't deemed it that. And when something like that happens, there's usually open up funds to apply for and that help with doing projects like this, but they've not done that.
Should we talk to them about that or do we not?
We've been in contact with Denise Bradshaw, who's with the Office of Emergency Management, and that, they just haven't deemed to be.
We've been dealing with each other three, four times a week.
Yeah.
So can I ask something that I don't want to make people mad? I just have a question. Are the farm, do the farmers have like zero responsibility on the things that come off of their property and plug up? There's zero responsibility on that? I mean, I don't know. I'm asking. I have no clue.
I would say probably not because historically they've been there. You know, it was the perfect storm. If the, if the crops had been bigger, it would have slowed everything coming down. But since they just planted, you know, like I said, we're going to have corn popping up all over town because it was just washed out a lot of their fields.
Well, I was looking. I mean, a lot of them still seem to be good.
Some of them, and they've replanted too.
I do have a question concerning kind of what we're talking about. On my mill route, County Road 52, there's a stockyard and it's on hills. And it is like a lake. I mean, it's, I've never, it's deep and, and they're pumping it out. And they're just, I don't know where all that's going, but it's total, it's manure water. And I don't know where it's going, but they've got gallons and, I mean, hundreds and I don't know how many thousands of gallons of water that are in these ravines that are part of this. And I, I just don't know where all that sewage water is, there is going.
It's going out of the fields.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know where it actually ends up, but I mean, I don't know how far it's traveling. I, I mean, see what's, what's bad is, is that right across the road, there's some retention ponds. And so I guess it's going into there. I, I don't know, but I was watching and like, that's an awful lot of water, an awful lot of sewage that, I don't know where.
Probably is going into some sort of retention or detention pond.
Because.
But, you know, you have to remember, it's an agricultural community.
Yeah.
And, you know, thank goodness we still have, you know, farmland here because that's what makes our area the way it is.
Yeah, I think of everything as concrete.
Well, it's like I explained to some people, you know, while Hillsborough overflowed, I said, well, just think what would have happened if the Hillsborough ditch wasn't there. Because everything would have been going into your yard.
Yeah, because Hillsborough was dry.
Yeah, we don't have any.
We had, we had, we had a call for water, but they hadn't, they weren't sending it down.
Right.
So all that water was rainwater, but I had gone out Sunday night because I was concerned about the water plant. But I got out onto 46 and down the sidewalk, and that's a really wide sidewalk. It was just like a channel with the water gushing. You know, you got that rip rap in there and whatever else and the people's fence and the sidewalk just channeled the water down that concrete going down towards Hillsborough, so.
And this year, I mean, you know, we've set it, it's been an unprecedented amount of water. I mean, we don't typically see that. You know, so this is unusual. In all the years I've worked here, and I don't know, Lebron, you can add, Gary Frank told me it's been maybe since 1980 something that he's seen it like this.
I was gonna say, I think the year that we paved the streets, it was really bad because over here by the, by Napa, the storm water was just, it was a fountain.
Yep.
Because I remember that.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Was it before or after they paved?
Just paved.
Just paved. Did it ruin some of the paving?
I don't think so. I don't think, but you know, when, when they designed the paving, the streets, they knew what, what areas we were going to have problems because trying to work around people's houses and the grade for everything. There were areas that we knew, but it does feel to me like we're getting more from outside of town. But I'm sure it's because of all the new subdivisions around.
It used to come down off the hills and hit the railroad tracks and then go this way until flattened out. Then when we did the paving over there, they put the open ditch in along the alleys that caught all that water. So it quit gushing into town and went north at that time. That was open ditch. And eventually it became culverts, right?
And, you know, again, too, if we had, if the Little Thompson Reservoir, Hillsborough Reservoir had been maintained and everything, you know, since the 1976, I think flood, I mean, that's why, that's an important piece to have. Because a lot of this water would have ended up in there, especially, I mean, if we could get it built to what it's decreed to, which is 975 acre feet, that would have held a ton of water that would not have come down.
So where are we at with that project just?
We should, I spoke to Leonard today. According to him, we're supposed to hear something by next month. So it's federal government and, you know, they have to go through their processes. So hopefully we hear something by next month.
It's really full. There's a lot of water in there and to dredge it.
There could be a lot more water.
It'd be a lot of extra work to dredge it because it was like dry, almost dry here before all this rain hit.
They'll, they'll plan the project around that.
Sure.
So they'll, they'll have minimal amount of water before they start cleaning.
They know, they already, they can't do any work on that during, from May until October anyway. So all the work they put into it is going to be over the winter months.
I haven't seen it full like that in a long, long time. It's really.
Is there any chance?
I haven't seen things as green as it is right now.
You haven't even turned on our sprinklers yet.
I kind of wonder how the water table is, dog. Like your wells over there at the RO plant. The well shouldn't have an issue now for a while, right? Because they're.
But the, the water's just going across. It's not soaking in.
Oh.
If the ditch was running, it's just sustaining, soaking in. The ditch is running and then stops. So we're slowly gaining, but not like we would if the ditch was running full time.
Okay.
It doesn't recharge very quickly in this kind of event.
No, if it did, then we'd be under the influence of surface water and that would be a whole new set of regulations we don't want to deal with.
Yeah, we don't want that.
Is there any chance we could get the GO to do the Hillsborough by like this coming winter or too far out?
No. The last, what they told Leonard was like 2028.
2028?
2021, 2028, but they're hoping to be able to start it sooner than that.
The milk is safe. Speed of development.
Yeah.
But at least we're in the process. I mean, we've been working towards getting there for almost four years. I know, so I know. But once it's there, it's there and everybody just has to remember, it's, it's got to be maintained.
But the scary thing is, don't we have problems with that dam up there?
No. They've got to do some work to it, but the engineer says the dam isn't.
I thought the dam had needed some repair work as well.
They probably have different regulations now, but it's not something that they've just deemed as nonusable.
All right, so we've got the Hillsborough project going. We've got this and we're going to have to take a look at our capital.
And Cherry Street, we have to make sure that we've got.
Funding for that. And that's still training at 1.8 million?
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
Right now, we're, we're just waiting on materials to arrive. A lot of the box culvert, concrete box culvert was special order. So once the materials arrive, we'll get the construction underway.
Any anticipation on that?
I would say probably the first week of July.
Okay.
Not very far off.
No, it's not. Because we're scheduled to be here the second week of June and that was back in April.
Okay. Yeah, there's some residents over there that were asking on social media. They're very excited, so.
In hindsight, I'm glad we didn't have the project already started.
Yeah, like Charlotte.
Like Charlotte and John's touch.
That, I feel bad for.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So now we have current costs, so now you know what you're looking at in that. It'll be great when we get the rest of the figures in that from Brian.
What additional costs do you think they're going to be?
We don't know yet. But I think what he's given us here is a very good approximate.
Number.
You don't know. I mean, again, if you have to acquire.
Plan the project.
If we have to acquire land or anything like that.
Right, then by the time we, you know, we have, we have solid numbers to work with, but by the time, you know, we decide, you know, pull the trigger on it, when it's going to happen, between now and then, those costs are going to fluctuate too.
We've got lots to do. But it's good. So we're moving projects along as best as we can and to improve it for the future. And I'm sure we're going to run into others that come along the way that need just much priority as well, so.
I think we need to seriously consider that half a percent sales tax increase. That would be, bring us approximately how much a year? Did we figure? Do you remember Wade?
Yeah, 685, something like that.
685?
We have to get, do a better, we have to get people to understand that they're paying at other places, I guess, as well.
And you also got to look at the evaluations when the people aren't going to vote for.
I know. That's the problem.
They're going to get stuck with $1,000 more in taxes.
What I wish people would look at though, really, is you're collecting this from people passing through. It's not just Milliken residents. It's capturing the people that are stopping at 7-Eleven, Dollar General, you know, so.
You've got to get rid of that stigma that it's costing you more money.
I know. Well, and that's part of it, you know. With the school bond and everything that has occurred.
Yeah, the school killed us.
Yeah.
So with the.
I don't mean to be negative, but that's what people's thoughts are. I'm just not here. I never voted for another tax increase in Mill. Doesn't matter what it is.
Aren't we getting more money now though?
The school told us we were going to get a.
Property tax?
We are limited at 5 and 1/2 percent, so.
Although you're great on your, the value on your house went up 20 percent, Milliken will only collect a maximum of 5.5 percent.
Right, because we've not degreased.
And you, you will end up giving us a new Mill levy figure, right? Or reduce it as well?
No, we will not reduce our mills. We will leave the mills where they are. We just only get to collect 5 and 1/2 percent. Most likely it'll be a temporary reduction.
Right? Okay.
So yes, yes, let me restate that.
It's going to be a credit.
It will, it will be, it will be a different mill rate due to the temporary credit. Yes, ma'am, it will be a different rate. Sorry, I didn't want to confuse.
Right, the Mill levy itself won't fluctuate. It'll be just a temporary credit on that Mill levy. You know, the 5 and 1/2 percent will help, but a lot of it, I mean, getting more of it would have been nice in order to do, we have funding for these things. But at the same time, it's still serving the residents because it goes back to the residents anyway.
Let me see. Okay, so right now, are we talking to Excel about that power box that's along 46 behind the homes in Colony Point currently?
Right, they're aware of it. The power pole along Alice, they did go in Tuesday night and get that power pole installed and it's back up. So we do have a secondary power feed into town.
Yeah, just a short story on that one, just so you know. And like I said, and I said it previously, how proud I am to work with these guys. Sunday night, Jason was out there again. I mean, it started earlier. I think the last email I got from him was at 2:30 in the morning. We were on the phone until about 11 that night. One of the phone conversations I was having with him, one of our employees ran out to put barricades up. That power pole came down and it was like fireworks going off out there. And Jason was like, ah, you know, and then he heard Leo's voice. And he was never happy to hear Kit's voice before Leo was running towards Jason's vehicle. And it could have, could have been a really disastrous thing, so. I mean, they, they put their lives out there because who would ever think something like that to happen? But because the road washed away so badly, it loosened up that pole and the pole came down.
Yeah, because everybody thought that the power box behind Colony Point caused the power outage, not the power pole. And I said, no, the power pole came down. The power, that power box was just fine though. Did Excel check it?
Yeah, Excel had to go out and replace fuses inside of it.
Just fuses, okay.
So when the power pole came down, it arced, it blew the fuses inside of the box.
Okay, that's what happened.
They were busy that night. They were running all over.
So.
Yeah, I was out without power for six hours at my house.
So have they given you any thoughts on that power box? Because the residents that live in that area are pretty worried about it.
As far as.
The safety of the power.
I don't, you know, I haven't heard anything about them raising it. They were more concerned about getting the power feed back on and getting a secondary power supply pole up in that feed into town at the time. We haven't went into any further discussions since then. That was just the primary concern.
Was it close to being underwater?
It was underwater.
It was.
Totally underwater?
Not totally. It was up, say roughly about a foot, foot and a half.
Are they waterproof?
You know, some of the newer ones are, but a lot of the older ones, the water can come up through the bottom because all your cable system comes up through the bottom. And there's no, usually the newer ones have fiberglass bottom and insulated boots. But I don't know what some of these older ones have inside of them.
Okay. I would like to stay on top of that one. One of the problems that I, that is going on out there is because you know how 46 goes up, that sidewalk goes up, all that water ran back towards the power box and it was coming eastbound down 46, so it just kind of, there was no drainage, not enough drainage there for that.
Right. And when Hillsborough broke open.
Yeah.
We will never have enough drainage to handle that. Because what, once that ditch breaks its banks.
Yeah.
I mean, the two drains that are there will capture as much water as what they can. But one, once that water overflows, those drains are full at capacity and the water will just continue to the north down Alice. Flood back here behind the road tracks and along Forest and then it just continued to make its way north along Forest. It's just, it's just a channel effect from upstream to downstream.
So does that detention pond at Alice and 46 on the south west corner, does that do us any good? Because it sure didn't look to me like it was.
No, that's, that's the Centennial Farms.
Yeah.
We got an issue there. I haven't figured out what's going on yet, but all three storm events, that detention pond has remained dry.
That's what I thought was happening.
Yes. So I, I just haven't had time to look into that yet, but there is something going on there that I need to figure out what's taking place. But all the water from. But all the water from Centennial Farms is being diverted to the open channel in Aynnes. And it's taking it from Centennial Farms directly east to Aynnes into the Sunfield Detention Pond. So that's why the Sunfield Detention Pond looks like it has overtopped its banks once or twice. Because that water's just not being released from Centennial Farms at a historic rate.
So that, okay, so that's, that makes sense.
That's a huge contributor to why that pond is so full right now. I just need to get out there and figure out what takes place with the storm drainage system.
So it used to work.
What was that?
It used to work.
Any chance that it's plugged up with those cattails and?
You know, I need to just get out there and try to figure it out. I don't know. I hate to speculate right now.
So would this be called a 100-year event or not?
Thousand-year.
It's more than 100-year event?
Yeah.
So being a homeowner, I would like to read something about what you're, you know, like in our newsletter, from you, why we can't afford to fix a lot of this, because this was more than 100-year event. This is, you know, and whatever you want to call it, I think that the residents need some kind of explanation that even though it's unfortunate, we don't have the money to make it so it's a 500, so it can do, you know, whatever it needed to do. Because this is highly unusual. We're not gonna see something like this again for, I don't know, you're at my.
No, no, I was, it seemed like this was a really localized storm. Is that correct?
Yeah.
It was.
It sat over us for a long, an hour. It sat on top of us for an hour and never moved.
Yeah, but it didn't, once it dissipated, it didn't move. It was just right here, is what I gathered.
It was, because I lived in Brighton, and Sunday evening, I was on the phone with Jason. We had a light sprinkle for two hours, and then over here, we're just getting pounded.
Well, they got it up in Fort Collins as well. But it was, it wasn't.
John still got hit pretty hard.
That's all.
But it wasn't a white spread, not like 2013.
No.
Is my point.
Right. And that could very well be why Weld County's not calling it.
It was not like.
It was really localized, and while we may have experienced a thousand-year, I don't know what it was. I know it was a huge amount in such a short time.
We can go back and look and see what the event was technically called.
But it was.
It's like 4.22 inches is what I heard from Don. In 200 minutes, it was 4.22 inches, is that right, that you got from one of your guys?
Well, one of the guys had a rain gauge, said in a few minutes, it was 11 inches per hour. But that wasn't for an hour, that was in a few minutes.
But didn't you tell me 4.22 inches in 200 minutes, it sat here?
No, you told me that.
But I heard that from somebody else. Okay, but had to have some kind of a thing that they, you know, some kind of a special thing that told them that.
On the set of plans that I did last night, and I didn't even, I didn't bring it, but I did have the rainfall for two years, a two-year event, five-year, 50-year, and I think 100-year events on there by the number of inches per hour. So when they calculated, the rainfall has to be over a period of one hour's time.
Win. One guy that works in the parts of National Weather Service and the whole three, he had 4.86 inches. Two people on the north side had five inches.
We had five.
We had five.
You've got more than we did down here from the looks I have, from the hail.
Yeah, the hail is what really added to the bad rush.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I personally think the Johnstown Breeze should write up the story, or you guys should submit one to them and put it in our newsletter, and so people understand that this is way more than what we normally.
Last year, we couldn't beg for water. I know.
I agree. I'm just saying, you know, it wasn't necessarily something you can measure in 100 or 500-year because of the short, narrow duration of it. But it was a unique event that won't occur again possibly ever. But it overwhelmed the system, and like, we got five, roughly five inches in Mad Russian. And I don't know if you saw the Dick Thompson, it was way over.
Yeah, it's tall.
It's over its bank. It was. And from that localized event, yeah, we ought to have something in there. I agree. But it's not something you can, it's not gonna happen.
Hey, John?
But I think the whole town needs to hear this, that they need to read it. They need people to read it. Don't you think that this is important enough that, so we're not blamed, or we're not like, hey, we need, you know, we need to do all these things and try to spend all this money, because we don't have the money.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna chip away at the projects that we can, and you know, coming up on budget season, we'll talk about these types of things.
If we had all the money in the world and implemented the projects we have, it still wouldn't have addressed this event.
Right.
Right, because here's a 100-year, on the 500, a 100-year event is 2.56 inches in an hour. A 500-year event is 3.4 inches in an hour.
And what's a thousand?
It doesn't, we're.
So it was over a 500-year.
Yeah, okay.
And that definitely needs to be explained to people.
So maybe what we do is Milliken Events pays for a special Johnstown Breeze edition for the convening day. Maybe we can talk to Matt about moving it up. And then we can have the town put in a whole thing about the rain, explaining, and have them do a little bit bigger edition, and just hit both at once, so we put it out early. And just send it to every resident in town.
Do you have any contacts at the National Weather Service?
Not quite a hand.
They figured to add something to what this was, to give it a little more credence.
I'm sure Drew, I'm sure he can pull something up.
Well, Benny and I, I'm trying to remember his name. During the last storm event, we're on with a gentleman from the National Weather Service out of Boulder. And.
You can find it.
Yeah, we can, we can.
It gives credence to the fact this was really unique.
We've had two, you've had two events in what, two or three weeks?
In about a month.
That's nuts. That's absolutely crazy.
You better talk to God about it.
Somebody upset on their internet somewhere.
No, don't say that.
In reverse, in reverse.
My favorite comment on Facebook was somebody said, give Mother Nature Snicker bark, because she hates Colorado.
I liked the one yesterday where somebody took a picture of the clear skies and said, what is this?
Yeah, I believe that was James Price, who was very humorous.
That was very clever.
Well, I've seen a couple humorous ones lately.
Oh, but anyway, I, again.
Let's go ahead and shut down for the meeting.
The guys are out there working, still thinking about things. We're gonna try to have costs for you, but it's been out of the town's pocket, if you will. One hall just said no. What we learned counting on.
I could add one more thing about the storm you were talking about. You were worried about the mother plant.
Yeah.
Just to let everybody know, the event that we had happen to us was a overflow pipe that's sub-ground level. Those have been sealed. They're cut and sealed. So the only way the water's gonna get into that plant is if it comes up over the foundation. And during events like this, we're watching remotely with cameras, and anybody that's out, we're having them checked. So if that water gets anywhere close to that plant, we are shutting it down. So it will not happen.
Yes, I will say that we have another employee that has moved into town. He's a stone's throw from my house, and he was out there that night, so. Good to know.
Thank you from employees. Thank you from the employees.
Oh, yeah.
They've been working hard.
Yeah, oh, they're working hard. These are challenges. Appreciate it.